I would like to call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for April 28, 2015. May we have the roll call, please?
Roll call for council. Council members divine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Harpetian.
Here.
Nanyan.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Here.
Roll call for authority members. Authority members divine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
NC.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Rozian.
Here.
Nanyan.
Here.
Chair Harpetian.
Here.
Will you please read your report?
Agenda for the April 28, 2015, joint public meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was postponed on Friday, April 24, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. There's one item before you today that is the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding five-year 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Proposed Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnerships Act Home Programs. One A is Council Resolution Certifying Environmental Negative Declaration. B is a Council Motion Approving Five-Year Consolidated Plan and Authorizing Submission to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. And C is Council Motion Approving Fiscal Year 2015-16 ESG and Home Annual Action Plan and Authorize Submission to HUD. These are all council actions.
Thank you. Mr. Choa.
Yes, sir. It is that time of the year and time of the five-year cycle when we have to present to HUD both the five-year plan as well as our annual action plan. There's a rather lengthy document in your binder. And so what we want to do is focus primarily on the annual plan because that will help profile the five-year plan. And so for that, I'll have Mr. Moises Garrio, our Senior Community Services Supervisor, come forward, give you the presentation, and he also will introduce Mr. Zankou Arminian, who is the chairman this year of the CDBG Advisory Committee. And together, they will profile for you the very arduous and difficult task that they had in making the recommendations that are here before you. So with that, we'll have Moises come up.
Thank you, Mr. Choa. Good afternoon, Mayor Najarian, and welcome, Housing Authority Chair, Mr. Harpetian, and members of the City Council and Housing Authority. I am going to hopefully briefly go over the consolidated plan requirements, which are requirement by HUD to have a five-year strategy for CDBG, our ESG, and our home programs. So I will try to go through that very briefly because I know we have a number of speakers for our action plan. So the purpose of the meeting is, again, approve our five-year consolidated plan, which goes from 2015 to 2020, and, of course, our annual action plan for the upcoming fiscal year of 2015-2016. So I first want to start off with the consolidated plan and briefly go through those requirements and those strategies that the city and our staff have come up with. Some of the plan requirements, of course, are outlined in your staff report. Why do we need a consolidated plan? Obviously, it's to receive the CDBG, ESG, and home housing funds and pay for projects and programs that we will implement for the next five years. Essentially, it is a strategy for our community development housing programs for the five years, including social services, neighborhood improvement, housing, homeless programs. So it gives us a very broad perspective of what we want to do for the next five years, given amount of funding that we receive, and we'll discuss the funding in a few minutes. The plan can be modified depending on grants, depending on situations in the community. So it's always a flexible document that we could always implement with a change to the community and advising the CDBG Advisory Committee and the City Council and Housing Authority about any changes that we may have that we need to implement. The main part of the consolidated plan is that community residents and agencies are stakeholders. We require consultation with them. A major portion of our funds, of course, are for the community residents, and we engage them through an annual community needs assessment process consisting of meetings, surveys, focus group meetings, community events, anywhere we can engage with the community to find out what the community needs are. Some of those priorities we'll discuss in a minute, but those priorities and actions are developed annually into the annual action plan. So five-year plan, then you have your annual action plan each year. We also have a process where we coordinate with the Continuum of Care. That's the Glendale Continuum of Care Program, which was formerly the Glendale Homeless Coalition. In terms of the goals, the plan, again, encourages that collaboration within our city and includes the departments for housing, community development, planning, and parks, of course, and Public Works, departments that utilized block grant funds in the past and engaged, find out what priorities are, what are some of the projects that are needed for the next five years. Now, given that our funding has been decreased, a lot of projects have been picked up by other departments that are doing infrastructure work, like Public Works and streets and street lighting. The plan is also involved with the Section 8 housing programs for rental assistance. So we need to make sure our plan is coordinated with the housing program as well. In terms of funding, we are projecting a $12 million five-year consolidated plan funding. And that's broken down into CDBG of 7.5 million, 750,000 for ESG homeless programs, and home at 4.3 million. That's about 1.5 million per year for CDBG, 150,000 per year for ESG, and 875,000 for the home program. Now, five years ago, we came up here and we thought we were going to receive a total of $30 million from our CDBG based on those current allocations. That has changed significantly in the last five years because of federal funding cuts. That 18 million in CDBG we expected, we actually received 12 million. So we've lost $6 million over the last five years, and just the CDBG funding alone, home has lost another 5 million. So it's really been a challenge to continue programs with reduction in funding. The other funding sources that we utilize to assist in the consolidated plan is the Section 8, again, rental assistance, the Continuum of Care funding, the workforce development funding, which we utilize a lot for referrals to the job center and programs and activities that will assist low-income residents in retaining jobs and job training. And, of course, there is very little set-aside funds that are used for housing. As I mentioned, a big part of it is the needs assessment and engaging the community and the CDBG Advisory Committee with events that we can ascertain the community's needs. And one of these, of course, is our demographics and looking at the 2010 census data, looking at our American Community Surveys data, that gives us some idea what the needs are, as well as our community needs surveys, which were done this year in conjunction with a RIN survey and also a web-based survey. And from that, we received 467 surveys altogether in deciding what are some of the priority needs for the community. We also did some focus group meetings with the agencies and also public hearings, two public hearings where we had 75 persons attending that and giving us some input from the community. All in all, it was 533 residents who provided direct input into the consolidated plan and the programs and priorities that we should be initiating for a five-year plan. Broken down into the categories of CDBG, you'll see that the first one, of course, is social services and strategies. And that's at 1.1 million over five years is the amount of funding that we would have for our CDBG program. And what HUD asks us to do is also look at, with diminished funding, what are some of your high priorities and what are some of your medium priorities? So the high priorities certainly have remained the same from the last five-year plan in this youth, crime and public safety, homeless programs, and employment programs. And those programs continue to be the priorities at the City Council, and, of course, the CDBG Advisory Committee has been following the last several years. See, some of the other needs, of course, are medium priorities, and those are childcare, senior service, which are just as well-needed services. But we're doing a ranking on them based on the HUD requirements and based on our surveys and our needs assessment. For the neighborhood capital improvement projects, which are the big portion of our funding, it's about $4.8 million program. And we're looking at programs that provide public improvements, such as streets and sidewalks and street lights as some of the priorities, but also the code enforcement program, which continues to be a need in the community and during the surveys and the community meetings of residents wanting to maintain housing that is livable and adequate for them. The other portions are the nonprofit community centers and city-owned community centers, and that's certainly a high need as some of the nonprofit facilities are aging and require improvements. But by and large, the Southern Glendale parks and libraries, with parks being the emphasis, having the greatest impact as far as neighborhood residents and receiving services. So that's been certainly a high priority for our department and, of course, the city of Glendale. In terms of homeless needs strategies, those are largely reviewed and approved by the Glendale Continuum of Care, who developed a strategy based on the new HERFAF requirements from HUD and the Continuum of Care strategy, and then also the Housing First strategy being implemented by HUD and required by those receiving funds. But by and large, the CDBG and ESG program is estimated to have $1.1 million in funding for the next five years for these kind of programs. In terms of housing needs and strategies, we're looking at, again, home over five years of $4.3 million. Certainly, that's a lot less than we had projected five years ago, it was of $11 million. Certainly, a significant cut in resources for housing for the next five years. But again, some of the funding that is used is also additional funding to Section 8 as a rental assistance program, which continues to be a very important strategy for housing for the community. Some of the challenges of consolidated plan, certainly for the next five years, is, of course, our diminished federal resources and services and infrastructure. Again, receiving 34% and 45% cuts over the last few years really does not assist us in implementing our consolidated plan, but also in the needs of the community. The economy continues to grow, however, as we know, it's the population that we're servicing South Glendale continues to move forward in receiving jobs and job training. That's an important part of our strategy, to continue to have workforce programs service the community. Demographic changes, Glendale population certainly sees some increases in population the next five years. And, of course, our priorities and need is certainly a very important element since we're challenged now with making some very difficult decisions. As you will see in the action plan presentation, that there are projects or needs that sometimes do not get fulfilled because of the funding is not available as it was before. The increased HUD and state regulatory requirements, again, are another challenge. We continue to receive, I would say, unfunded mandates from the government to provide additional professional mandatory programs that are not funded but are required now of our new CDBG and home programs, and that certainly will be a challenge. So that's the end of the consolidated plan. Again, that's our five-year plan, and what leads into that is our annual plan, and that's our 15-16 CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan. And that's what we're certainly here to see. In terms of the first...
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Moises.
So the five-year plan, although there are some dollars assigned to the categories, they're not firm figures because that can change on a yearly basis. So the point of this was to focus on the priorities through your surveys and your community outreach to see what the goals of the community were for the five years going forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. It's an estimate based on the current funding, projected five years, and that could change up and down, but the priorities are set, and whether we receive additional funding or less, the priorities are set. But it could be changed, but those are what we're looking at, the priorities and strategies.
Now, are those priorities in the five-year plan transferable to our one-year action plan?
Yes, they should be in line with each other as far as the five years and the annual priorities.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of those funds that we're looking at for this year, you can see the CDBG entitlement funds are, well, certainly less than last year, with a significant cut to the housing home program and the CDBG program at minus 3%. The home, the ESG programs continues to be pretty stable as far as their funding allocations go. If we look at the funding with CDBG, what entails when we receive cuts like that is cuts in social services. And this year, the cut in social services was $20,000 for the city of Glendale, and of course, that translates to certain services not being provided. I won't go too much in depth in the CDBG development process because we just talked about the needs assessment, those priorities, the five-year plan, but again, the annual action plan and those priorities should be in sync with the five-year priorities of the consolidated plan. But we did go out for an RFP for the CDBG program back in November 2014. The committee did review proposals and recommendations. I would also add, the ESG program also went out for an RFP, and that's handled by the Glendale Continuum of Care Board. And again, that's a separate process as well. We did have a public hearing where we had 20 participants speak on the recommendation, and we did a public advertising of all the recommendations. As far as the results go, again, looking way at the bottom, it's $237,000 in CDBG social services. That's certainly, again, another, a cut from this current year. The committee had a cut of about $334,000 in CDBG funding requests, which, again, is a very challenging, difficult time, knowing that this time around, from those 13 proposals, they were all very good proposals. So it's a very challenging experience for the committees, the committee members, to make those difficult cuts. In terms of our neighborhood capital improvement project for CDBG, again, we funded four proposals this year for nonprofits and three city pre-designated projects. Those projects were the Code Enforcement Program, Palmer Park, and Ascensia Section 108 loan. In terms of the specifics from the CDBG plan, again, it's $1.5 million in CDBG funding. We do allocate 20% for administration and social service, again, at $237,000 at the maximum percentage of 15%. We cannot go beyond 15% for social services. And capital improvement projects, like 65% of our budget. In your package, you will have Exhibit 2, which lists the nonprofit, I'm sorry, the city nonprofit, all the projects that we had approved or the committee has approved for funding. Again, those projects amount to $237,000 for social services, which is where some of the funding cuts we did receive on that. And Exhibit 3 in your packet is the descriptions of each of those projects and the locations. I'm going to breeze through this part. This is the evaluation process that we follow, and this is the committee's process that is utilized to review those proposals. And certainly, they do take some effort, and they do a very good job in reviewing and analyzing the proposals, but our proposals are done each year, and this process does take some time to review. Now, the important part is the committee does go through a review of the quarterly reports that we provide as far as the numbers serve, the annual reports, expenditure rates, previous monitoring issues, and performance, and determining some of the allocation decision as well as our internal auditor's review of each organization's financial statements. So there's quite a bit of review process going through the annual action plan projects. Again, this is the evaluation criteria that's used from the committee. So in summary, the synopsis of what the CDBG funding recommendations are is that we do have $20,000 less for CDBG social services. The committee did prioritize youth services as one of their priorities, and, of course, that's a priority of our consolidated plan, our annual action plan. So that's certainly in line with the program priorities that are developed in the consolidated plan and what we heard from the community and the community residents during our survey and during our community focus group meetings. But all the current projects were recommended for funding. Two new proposals were not recommended for funding. Four out of five youth programs received increases, again, in line with the committee's desire to increase funding for at-risk youth programs. And five out of six non-youth programs received reductions. So with us today is Zankou Arminian. He's our chair of our CDBG Advisory Committee, and also Michelle Roberts, who's the executive director of the YWCA, who's the chair of the Glendale Continuum of Care Board. But I would like to call Mr. Arminian to talk about the thought process of the CDBG Advisory Committee and how they came up with some of the recommendations and their thought behind it.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council and staff, thank you for this opportunity to address you on these matters. Before I get started, I wasn't able to be there yesterday, but congratulations to Council Member Divine on your reelection and Council Member Harpetian on joining the council. I look forward to working with all of you. So a couple of principles that I think Moises touched upon, which were factors in our decision-making and thought process, were that we continue to see a trend downward in terms of amount of available funds. I think, this is, by the way, my second funding cycle that I'm participating in, first as chair of the process. And we started with this issue last funding cycle, continues to decrease in funding this funding cycle, and you start to get to a point where there's an issue of diminishing returns when you try and spread the funding available too thin. It becomes a burden, both in terms of the inefficiencies, because there's a lot of reporting that goes with these funds. It becomes inefficient for both the receiving party as well as the administering party, meaning our department, who has to administrate and all the documentation that needs to be assembled to provide evidence to HUD of how the funds are being used. It seems, without a scientific analysis here, it seems the threshold for that sort of administrative pain, if you will, seems to be around the $9,000, $10,000 mark, and anything below that seems to be not worth it. We did see in the last funding cycle where actually some funds in the $13,000, $14,000 range were returned, if you will, because they felt that the administrative burden was not worth the effort for those funds, and we ended up reallocating some of those funds. In general, as Moises highlighted, we adopted an approach, first of all, to say that the vast majority of those applying for funds are very worthy organizations. I wanted to make sure I stated that, and that the decisions on the funding, except for one case I can cite, they were not based on, you know, one organization being less worthy than another. It's just you get to a point, as you all know, in your decisions on a weekly basis, that you have to make some decisions that are hard decisions. There was only one case in which there was an applicant, both on the social service program side and on the capital side, where we actually had significant questions about the integrity as well as the, you know, the backup in terms of the actual proposals, some potential conflicts of interest, where we actually zeroed those folks out in that process that had to do with more of the application versus the funding available. And so we ended up making some decisions. I will say that, on average, for those who got cut in terms of funding from previous levels... So first of all, no one got pretty much what they requested as a general principle. Second, when you look at previous funding of organizations, almost all of them, of those that got cut, the average cut was about 16%. There were three organizations that actually got increases. A few, four, sorry. Three of them were after-school programs. The increase was very nominal. It went from like $11,000 to $13,000. There is only one organization out of all of them that is an outlier in this overall conversation, which is CASP, which provides the mental health program in one school. And the reason they're an outlier is because the committee decided that, you know, what would be the amount for them to get into a second school to extend their program, and that's the amount by which we increased their funding. So in their case, you know, they, last year, had $15,000 to have their program in one school, and we went to $26,000 so that they can get into a second school. That's really the only one that's an outlier in the process. Like I said, the after-school programs, which are the Salvation Army, Home Net Men, and the Glendale Police Department's STAR program, were the only ones that got a few thousand dollars more. The rest of the programs all got cut, like I said, on an average of 16%, but there are variations of a few percentage points up or down from that. And so while we did prioritize youth programs, there was one youth program that did not get any funding, Glendale Healthy Kids, which came in with a $30,000 proposal for the first time, at least since I've been part of the committee. We decided not to do that because we felt that the program could continue without the CDBG funding, whereas other programs would end up being discontinued because they don't have other sources of sustaining their programs. And then Glendale Youth Alliance, which last year had gotten $50,500, we took them down to $37,500, not because the program is not worthy, but again, considering that there are other revenue sources that contribute to that program, everything from the city doing some of the hiring as well as private sector. So there are certain revenues that come in that allow the program to sustain even at the lower contribution amount. So we are at a point where we have to make some decisions. These are our recommendations to council. Obviously, it's within your power if you felt you wanted to change any of it, but we think we did the best we could with the money that we had available, recognizing that any of the organizations that did get cuts, it's not easy taking a cut, but these are some realities we have to deal with. Our forecast going into next year would be that if this trend continues of lower amount of HUD funds, then we're going to have to make more hard decisions in the future and fund less programs at a higher level so that the programs could have a meaningful amount of funding. But that will obviously depend on HUD's allocation to us. So with that, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor. Mike.
As you were making the decision to make cuts from various applicants, how did you decide who you're going to cut and why, and how much you're going to cut and why?
Again, the first criteria was the issue of youth programs versus non-youth programs. We tried to have that focus this year. The second part was, to what degree would the cut either allow the program to continue or was it, would it completely handicap it and disable it? And in some cases, you know, for example, if we were to go any lower in any of the after-school programs, it doesn't become worthwhile to them or to us, even though the amounts we're giving them are not a huge amount. So the first criteria, the youth, based on the strategic plan, as well as second being whether or not, you know, the organization has the capability to sustain the cut. You know, if we're saying the program is valuable, which most of these were, then can the organization sustain that cut and yet still continue?
Very well, thank you. I have a couple of questions. First, for the city attorney, is it constitutional to discriminate based on age in distributing the CDBG money?
Is it constitutional to discriminate by age?
Yes.
Well, it's almost like a loaded question. The answer is no, but I think you can treat different services differently based on the needs that's being provided to the population. So, you know, I think...
I mean, my only concern is that, as we set a priority for youth programs, you know, it seems to me that two programs, each being equal, each being as efficient and serving the same number, a youth program would have a higher scoring than a senior program. So is that, is there anything wrong with it? Do we need to, should the age component be removed from the evaluation and look for the highly efficient programs, the ones that serve the greatest number, that do the greatest good, et cetera?
Without having looked at it in detail, it seems to me that the use of this program historically has been to provide, you know, for youth, for seniors, and I don't think that a court would necessarily strike that down as unconstitutional or impermissible under the guidelines, as long as the program's open to all and there are criteria which are used to judge the program. And the programs that are given priority meet those criteria.
But when you say "open to all"... But when you say "open to all," senior couldn't join the youth program?
Well, open to all that are eligible. No, but I mean, the programs, the funding itself is open to all that meet its criteria, and it's up to the CDBG board and then the council to make decisions based on those criteria, and as long as you're following them, you're going to be complying with the regulations.
Okay. I mean, this is a very difficult process, and I deeply appreciate the chair's work and the committee's work. So, based on that criteria, who were the main beneficiaries as our youth programs? Youth Alliance was cut slightly because you said there's other funds potentially available. Glendale Healthy Kids also, the same idea that they have other funds. So, who were the, let's just call them out. Who were the programs that did receive the, I guess, the benefits of being in the priority category?
Well, I'll just say that, so, all of the youth programs, except for Glendale Healthy Kids, received some level of funding. Now, if the question is, who got a little bit more and who got cut, that's where you have some differentiation happening. So, the three after-school programs, which are Salvation Army, Home Minute Men, and the Glendale Police Department's STAR program, so each of those got $2,000, $2,000, and $1,000 more, so a total of $5,000 more going to those after-school programs.
Okay.
The one-
CASP, is CASP considered a youth program as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, they got a-
So, that's why I'm saying CASP is the outlier.
Because they needed that money to get into the second school?
Yeah, so that was our, our thought process was, we wanted to give them a shot at getting into a second school and then measuring their performance. Obviously, we would take a fresh look at this next year if they apply again, and we'd have to see some metrics to see what sort of impact they were able to make with that extension. If they're not able to make that impact, then we would pull back, theoretically, you know, back to one program, I mean, one school. So, if you look at it, they went from, last year's funding was $15,000 for one school. They put in a request for about $44,000, and we gave them $26,000. Because we asked them, so, how much would you need to get into a second school? And that's how we came up with that differential, which is still less than what they requested, but gets them into a second.
Okay. Ms. Divine?
I just have a question about, I'm sorry, I just have a question about, how do you, how do you come up with that theory that Glendale Healthy Kids has ways of getting money more so than some of these other nonprofits that you're giving, you know, extra money to?
Well, there was, obviously, a lot of the Glendale Healthy Kids capability comes from donated services from the medical community. And we, and they don't, weren't able to pin down a specific number of what that amount is, but at the end of the day, we couldn't give out, we couldn't split it up too many ways, and the program had been functioning prior to any sort of CDBG funding. So, obviously, they have some way of coming up with whatever they need to keep the program going prior to them ever applying to us. So, that was an assumption that we made, that since they've been functioning before they ever applied, that they could continue to do so.
Couple of questions.
Sir Betian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. You said that some programs, if it falls below $9,000 or so, then it doesn't make sense to even move forward with it. Is it because of the initial cost of the documentation and applying for the CDBG? Is it the accounting they have to provide? What is that, what is that, why is that initial cost so high?
Well, they, I'm kind of throwing the $9,000 mark because it seems that that, that's what the threshold seems to be. Last year, like I said, there was one organization that gave back more than that. I can't remember the exact amount, but it may have been $13,000, $14,000, I think, that was returned. But many of these organizations do not have the administrative staff to do the documentation to, for example, just keep records of number of people that use the program, et cetera. And so, they end up having to hire people, even if it's part-time staff, to do the documentation, in which case at $9,000, part of that money's going just to the administration, so even less of it is actually going to the program itself.
And I think that could be the benchmark as to find out how they, how much sources they had last year to fund their own program on a yearly basis. So, we could tell if you cut $3,000 or $5,000, they can raise that money somewhere else or not. I mean, that could be-
So, part of, Councilmember Gharpetian, part of the factors that staff evaluates is what they're able to leverage that they already have to get more traction in terms of the program itself. So, that is a part of the analysis that staff does in these sorts of cases.
And does the number of people they serve, either as youth or seniors, does it make a difference on the funding that they get? Because there could be a program that they serve, I don't know, 80 people, 100 people a year, and the other one is serving 20 people a year. Would that make a difference on how you determine how much funding they get?
I'm going to defer to Moises because I think they do, the staff does the analysis of the number of people and participants in the programs, and that is one of the metrics that are provided to the committee for deciding. So, we do, we do look at the impact that they can make, but the actual analysis is done by staff.
Okay.
There's both a quantitative and a qualitative approach to it. The number of folks that are served, but also looking at the outcomes. And those outcomes speak back to, as Moises will surely tell you, speak back to what the priority is that the committee gives to the different goals of the CDBG program. So, number of kids, number of individuals served, but if those individuals are from a part of the community that the committee is prioritizing, that is also weighted. So, it's both items, or both dimensions.
Here's a choi, I'm going to answer that question. But yes, we do take a look at the numbers served, but it's not always orange to apple. Some agencies who do intensive case management have lower numbers, and some have more recreational programs, so they're going to serve higher numbers. So, someone has 40, someone has 80, you can't compare one to the other. It's a very challenging situation, and that's something the committee certainly takes a look at, and costs as well.
Last question, there was a $20,000 shortage this year for social services. How was that allocated between all the programs?
Mr. Chair, the allocations that cut was, was cut, there wasn't necessarily a strategy, per se, take a percent here, take a percent, it was overall. They looked at the overall proposals and made, made funding decisions based on the overall funding. Now, I did want to point out, too, the amount of youth funding is still less than 50% of the overall CDBG funding allocation. These amounts that they use for the youth programs are very small incremental, $1,000, $2,000. So, it wasn't a vast majority of the funding. It was, I believe, 50% of the funding did go to youth programs. And that's a bit higher than last year, which was, I believe, 40%. So, there was a little bit of concerted effort for the youth programs, but not entirely were all the funds for the CDBG youth programs.
Councilmember Friedman?
I have a couple of questions. This is something that I think I've asked every single year, which is, how are we evaluating, not number of people served, but the effectiveness of these programs? What do, what kind of metrics do we have to see how effective the programs are? And I don't mean in terms of how many people are served or how cost-effective they are, but looking at things like what effect on the lives of the children, for instance, or the youth that we're serving, what effect does that have for them five years out, 10 years out, 20 years out? I know it's hard to look at, but are we looking at any type of metrics, any type of auditing, so that we really know beyond feeling good and beyond numbers of people served that we're making a real difference and that we're really being cost-effective?
That type of outcome-based approach is what we do as part of the surveys, the exhaustive surveys that this program comes with. When we do, we probably do more community outreach and information gathering and focus group information gathering than really any other type of program that the city offers. So, do we tag them and release them back to the wild to see where they are 10 years from now? No, and we wouldn't have the capacity to do that. But we do go back into a geographically bound area, that is the CDBG census tracts, year after year, cycle after cycle, to say, okay, this is what we've been doing. What do you see, community? Because we can tell you how many individuals served, cost per individual served, and we marry our quantitative to what the community is telling us qualitatively, and try to determine a best picture of the outcomes that ultimately informs what Mr. Armenian was talking about in terms of the priorities that are set. So, we don't do it to the science, I think, that you've requested, but I don't know that we could, given the nature of this program.
Right. Well, at least you understand-
Most definitely, ma'am.
-where I'm going, and I'm glad to hear that you're doing that and that the committee is reviewing that information as well, and that as we continue with these programs, we continue to do that. And I know it's hard because, you know, not, these programs, some of them are not 10 years old, five years old. But to the extent that we have Glendale Healthy Kids, it's been around a while, the YMCA has certainly been around a while, different types of programs and STAR, I think the, as more we can gather that data, the better, easier it will be for the committee to make its decisions and for us to make our decisions. And along those same lines, how much information did our committee review? Did they just see this 12-page PowerPoint? Is that what they made their decisions based on, or did they have more information than we're getting?
Councilmember Freeman, they received a packet of all the proposals. The committee did go through the CDBG Needs Assessment Priority Process back in November, so they saw the raw data numbers for the survey we did, the needs assessment that we provided the committee to review, what are some of the trends, some of the patterns in the city. So, they did see a number of data as well, and I know each year they also make site visits to the agencies.
So, they saw a lot more information to make their decisions than we're seeing right now?
Absolutely.
Like twice as much, twice as many PowerPoints?
I think about five times as much data.
At least, right? And they made site visits. And how much time did they spend between the site visits and their meetings evaluating, making these recommendations?
Councilmember Freeman, their, the site visits are done separately. They're usually done in the fall, the fall of the program year, and then the evaluations are done in the winter. So, the proposals come in in November, the site visits begin in October, September, and then the process starts again each year. So, they do have experience with these agencies. Again, some of these agencies have been funded for 20 years, so they're able to remember from past experiences. So, there is quite a bit of review by the committee, by the attorney with staff.
So, did they spend half an hour to making this discussion? Mr. Armenian, how much, how much time do you think?
First of all, just to be a little bit more visual, we get a box of about this much paper-
Okay.
...which is the, each of the proposals, staff evaluation of each of those proposals, some level of auditing to look at leveraging of dollars and that sort of aspects. The actual sessions, so beyond the individual members studying each of the proposals, I know personally, I spent several days' worth of time, if you look at it cumulatively, just going through all the proposals page by page. And then finally, we spend about a day and a half in session going through it. The social programs take a whole day, the capital programs take about half a day of actual in-session time. So, you know, I would say it's quite a bit of information, a lot more than what you saw today. This is a synopsis for your benefit. And I know that I can speak for my colleagues in that, just based upon their questions and their examination during the in-session part, that they've obviously read through every page of it because they all go, each page, we have questions, we go through it page by page. That's separate from the Q and A part that happens when the organizations show up to actually make a summary presentation of their proposal.
Thank you very much. So, where I'm going with this, if it's not obvious, is that we have an excellent committee. I know every member of that committee personally, and they are some of the most serious and well-educated in terms of what's happening, the community members that we have and any commission, and they spend an incredible amount of time doing their homework. And the job that they have in front of them is very, very difficult, maybe even impossible, because there are so many, there's so much need in the community, and there's so many extremely worthy groups out there and nonprofits. And I know that every single one of those members would like to sit up there and fully fund every single group that comes in front of them, to help them with the need that they have. And we are at a time where unfortunately, the money that we get for CDBG has been shrinking every single year that the federal government gives us. They keep decreasing, and I've been to Washington talking about this, as many of my colleagues have, and Councilmember, Sunanian and the other council members up here, thank you. I'm so used to saying mayor, the mayor-
I know, I know.
...have been doing this, and I've heard the same, you know, had the same horrible experience of being told that not only has your funding been cut this year, but guess what? Next year it's going to be cut again, next year it's going to be cut again, and maybe we're going to get rid of it entirely. You know, we keep hearing that. So, they have the very unpleasant task of reducing funding for groups that absolutely deserve every cent of the funding and more. So, you know, my feeling is that I put a lot, I give a lot of respect to the work that they've done, and that unless I hear that they've either done something wrong or something improper, or they were giving wrong information, my inclination is to confirm their recommendations. So, I just wanted to get that out there now. I know we have speakers, and I wanted to say that to them as well, and I, you know, it's, the nice thing is you're handing out money. The bad thing is that you're handing out about a tenth of the money that you'd like to hand out, and maybe a fifth of the money you handed out five years ago. So, it's a tough, tough position to be in.
Okay, we do have some speakers who would like to address the council and the agency. First speaker is Talar Eintablian. Three minutes for each speaker.
My name is Talar Eintablian, and I'm here today on behalf of the Armenian Relief Society's Social Services. I'm joined by a large group of our Glendale-based clients, whose presence here demonstrates their support of our programs and our services. Together, we'd like to respectfully voice our concern to the Glendale City Council regarding our agency's reduced CDBG funding, proposed funding for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. We are facing a $10,000 reduction from our current year funding, and we would like to request reconsideration for an increased amount. A reduction in CDBG funding would negatively impact one of our agency's most significant programs, which is the Community Outreach Project, aimed at offering Glendale residents services that enable them to become productive and contributing members of our community, including job search assistance, English as a second language, and life skills classes for senior citizens, and additional social services, such as case management, completion of forms, referrals to counseling, and more. The program is administered by one employee, who is delivering a multitude of services as I just described. Our agency maintains a steadfast commitment to servicing a hard-to-reach population, such as individuals with language barriers, the disabled, unemployed, as well as senior citizens. Our doors are open to all persons in need. Throughout the years, while funding has undergone a noticeable decrease, the demand for our services remains at an all-time high. Each year, we continue to have an active waiting list for our ESL and Life Skills classes, and we meet and surpass our meaningful program outcomes and goals, which are aimed at producing self-sufficient and acculturated members of the Glendale community. Our remarkable program success rates are a true indication of the quality services that we provide in the Glendale community, and one of our utmost priorities remains the welfare of our Glendale residents. Therefore, we would like to respectfully request and urge that our proposed funding amount be reconsidered and increased for the 2015-2016 year in order to allow us to effectively continue operating our Community Outreach Project. We remain hopeful that our request will be given full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Knarik Razarian.
I am a student in the Armenian Relief Society's Social Service ESL and Life Class Level. I have been attending this school since January, and now I can form short sentences and write pretty well. I can count on writing a check, and now all the colors. I can do much better now, and I no longer struggle while shopping. I am very pleased with my teacher. She is a great teacher. She explains everything very well. pleased with my teacher. She is a great teacher. She explains everything very well. I am thankful for everything the school has done for me. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job for an ESL student. Next speaker is Vasgen Janian.
Good afternoon. My name is Vasgen Janian, and I am here today in support of the Armenian Relief Society Social Services. I am a Glendale resident and a current student in the ESL and Life Skill Class Level 2. I am a refugee who came to this country five months ago. The ARS services have helped me improve my English language skills, and I have started to speak and understand the language with confidence. Since enrolling in these classes on January 2015, I have been able to become more involved in my community, and I am able to communicate and understand the English language. They provide an excellent learning experience for me, and I am grateful to be able to benefit from their services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jeanette Cordon. Unless you had it in order, I see numbers on the cards. Okay, anyway, Michael Kiamian is next.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeanette Cordon, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Glendale Youth Alliance. Since 1993, GYE programs have provided an essential service to our community. We have served over 7,500 youth and provided most youth their first-paid job and training. We have prepared them to succeed in the workplace. GYE has successfully administered 20 CDBG grants, meeting, in most cases, exceeding the set outcomes every year, without ever having disallowed costs. Based on the community surveys and the CDBG consolidated plan, after-school youth programs and employment programs have always been and continue to be a priority in this community. While we understand that the CDBG grant allocation for social service programs was reduced by 20,000 this year, reducing GYA's allocation by 13,000 is not a fair distribution of the reduction. Of the 11 social service organizations recommended for CDBG funding this year, GYA had the largest reduction of 13,000. That's a 26% reduction from the 2014-2015 fiscal year. A total of six organizations received reductions, of which GYA was the only after-school youth program, while other youth programs actually received an increase. On behalf of the GYE board, I want to thank you for your support of the GYE programs through all of these 22 years. We hope you will reconsider the recommended funding levels and help us invest in the future workforce of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Kiamian.
Honorable Mayor, Chairman Garbedian, members of this council and committee, my name is Michael Kiamian. I am here today to support Glendale Youth Alliance. I've had the good fortune of being part of this program as a board member for the past seven years. Since 1993, as my colleague mentioned a moment ago, GYA has served thousands of youth in our community. Starting out as a youth program, youth employment program, GYA has since grown to also provide other critical supportive services to youth as well. I've seen this impact firsthand. GYA staff work with youth on an individual basis, providing mentoring beyond employment services. We have countless success stories pulling young adults out of poverty and into high-paying permanent jobs, and helping younger youth transition into their first job. We give priority to low-income, at-risk youth digging deep into our community and providing opportunities to those who otherwise wouldn't see the light of day. I don't need to tell you how important programs like GYA are in keeping youth off of our streets and out of criminal activity, but I will tell you that youth who start work at a younger age have a higher lifetime earning potential, helping drive future poverty levels down. It is evident that after-school programs are a critical desire for our community. I know you're put in a tough position with the required cuts. However, I hope you will reconsider a more balanced method in lieu of cutting $13,000 from just one organization. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Natalie Camorro.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and members of the Housing Authority. I'm Natalie Camorro, Executive Director of Ascensia, which has three different projects in this proposal. I want to echo your comments about the cuts to this program. Years ago, I looked at some old records, and our block grant program funding for our outreach team had been $98,000. It's down to 20. The cuts to the CDBG program have been relentless, year after year after year, essentially a message from Washington telling localities that maybe we don't know as much as we think, and that we're only entrusted with a smaller amount of money to do this very hard work. We have been cut. Our ESG grant is almost half of what it was in prior years due to the sequestration and the new funding levels, and so, we're working to manage with that. The impact for us is that we're having to go outside of Glendale to find funding. That means our resources and time for these programs are also having to be shared outside of Glendale. For example, the CDBG-funded outreach program is not all full-time in Glendale anymore. We have to have our outreach team out in Burbank, so I can keep that staff on a full-time basis. If I lose that, I don't, I don't have an assurance of keeping the staff. And if you know Alfred and David, you know they're phenomenal, and we need to keep them. This is a tremendously impactful program. We move chronically homeless people off the streets of Glendale. It's not a matter of moving them to another area so you don't see them. We actually move them into their own home. So, I do thank the committee for continuing to support it, even though it is a lower level, and we are not happy having a cut. But, I'm glad it's only at 20,000, because I don't know that I could manage a $9,000 grant. That's, that's a lot to ask someone. I also want to thank you for support of the capital project. If you haven't been to, I think almost all of you have been to our access center and emergency housing program. It's a wonderful place for us to be doing our operations, and I look forward to having a long life there. We'll see what kind of funding will help keep it going, but I do want to thank you for that as well.
Thank you. And I have no other cards, and let's pick up the discussion. Freeman.
I have a question for staff. Do we offer services to our nonprofits in terms of helping them write grants or referrals? I know there's a, there's a group called Community, is it Community Foundation that does that?
Yes.
Community Partners Foundation, maybe, that helps nonprofits with grant writing and finding funding? But, do we offer that assistance?
We work with the Executive Directors Roundtable. We do offer assistance with marketing and promotions, but generally not with the, we don't have the in-house expertise to work on their grant applications.
Because we write grant applications.
We do for the work that we do, and whenever we do collaborate with, from our homeless services providers to somebody like Ascensia, we can collaborate, but that generally isn't the assistance that they need.
And let me make a caveat. I'm not asking about all nonprofits. I'm asking the ones that are our financial partners in terms of helping us deliver services, taking some of that burden off of us, using our CDBG money. My suggestion would be that maybe we look into if it's a need for some of them, of giving some of that assistance, if we're capable of it, given that they're, we're leveraging them to help us provide services as much as they're leveraging us for financial assistance. We're all serving the same people, which is the constituents of this city. So, we are partners. So, if we can be of assistance that way, I would certainly support spending staff time in that way to really help, if it's of benefit. And I know it won't be, some of these groups are very sophisticated, and they do a great job doing grant writing, and some of them could probably use that help. And I know that there are also some resources out there of nonprofits that just do that. So, maybe it's a question of putting those groups in contact with those nonprofits, with those, those resources that are already out there, so we're not duplicating some kind of effort. But, I think, I would like to throw that open to the nonprofits to let me know if that would be of help to you, maybe. And then, I'll see what I can do on our end to see if we can help with that, because I feel like we're throwing a lot of these groups to the wolves, because the money's not coming in. We can't help it. But, whatever assistance that we can give that maybe is non-financial, let's try to find ways of doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Devine.
I'd like to preface my comments by saying that my husband did serve on the CDBG, so I do know how much work goes into that committee, commission, and how difficult it is to make these decisions. Looking at the funds that are allocated, I'd like to have an explanation, if I could, on the justification for the $11,000 increase in, in, what is it, CASPs. It seems like that's pretty out of line when you're cutting so much from others, and then, but you're giving them 11, sorry, $11,000 more. Because I'd like to see maybe that lowered, and maybe some of that given to some of the other groups that are needing extra money.
Councilmember Devine, as I mentioned earlier, currently CASPs is in one school, and the funding level that they were at last year was $15,000. They came in with a request for about $44,000. We asked them in their questioning and our deliberations about what would it take, what was, what's the minimum amount with which you could get into a second school with your program? And that's how we came up with the 11,000. And as I mentioned, out of all the programs, that is the outlier in terms of allocation, because it is going from 15,000 allocated last year to 26,000 allocated this year. The other thing I'll mention is the only other increases were in the three other after-school programs by a couple thousand each. So, total of the Salvation Army, the Home Unit Men, and the Glendale Police Department after-school programs was a total increase of about 5,000. So, if you were to go back to what they originally got, it's about 5,000 right there. So, between the 5,000 for those and the additional amount of 11,000 for CASPs, those were the only increase areas. And so, our thinking behind that was, we wanted to give them an opportunity to get into a second school. And whether or not, whether or not they are able to prove the kind of exponential impact of that, that's something that we would obviously measure during the next funding cycle.
And there we get back to, how many students are they serving at that school, at the first school? How many students are, are in that drug program? Is that what it?
It's a mental health, a mental health program, a mental health counseling program. Perhaps, they do have representatives here that might be able to answer that question or voices.
And by the way, is it the case, it sounds like it's all or nothing. You either give them that amount, or you don't give them any of it, right? Because they either can go into the second school, or they can't. So, if you give them half, they just can't go into the next school. Is that the idea?
Councilmember Devine, the number to be served by CAS is 25 currently at Columbus Elementary School. They currently receive $15,000 in CDBG funds. So, the thought process to add a school, they would receive the extra funding and go to Edison Elementary School, where there's another high need. This program is a counseling program, which was a very unique, very different program than some of the regular youth programs. And I guess the committee also felt that certainly mental health is certainly a very significant issue in the community, and they do a very intensive job of doing counseling at the school. And they provide the services, of course, free of charge. So, the need was both youth programs, but also the mental health program is another priority. But, it's not certainly an all-or-nothing. They could still remain at Columbus at their current rate of $15,000 and just run one scoop there. But, the thought process to add a second school and utilize certainly the Edison Pacific or Edison Elementary School as the second school.
Is that funding for a counselor? Is that what the funding is for?
Councilmember Devine, yes. It's for a psychologist who does the group counseling program and some administrative expenses. And CAS does leverage the project with other funds, other leveraging, and the committee did ask them to increase their leverage for the second school. So, they're actually providing a second school with some leveraging of their own funds.
Miss, a question. Does the school district put any money into this program, or do they have counseling programs as well, after-school counseling?
Councilman Freeman, the school does not provide direct funding for the program. They do provide staff support, office support. I believe, an assistant at the school would help referrals and take care of some of that process, but the actual counseling is done by CAS. And I'm not aware of any other counseling program with the school district, per se, that does this kind of group counseling program over a time period of, I believe, eight or 10 sessions, three, 10 weeks.
Well, I know Glendale Healthy Kids was working on a mental health program, so...
And we know, and can do our mental health programs, excuse me, Councilmember Devine, there are other programs in the community. Certainly, there's Didi-Hirsch, there's Pacific Clinics, there's the county programs, of course, private psychologists. But, a lot of them are required to have insurance or a very low income to qualify under Medi-Cal. And so, some of the families that CAS serves, working families are in that gap of, we don't earn enough money to qualify for a, certainly, private insurance, or make too much to qualify for Medi-Cal. So, this is certainly one of the gaps in the youth services as far as mental health counseling.
Do you know what is their entire budget? I know they're requesting 43,000, but this is the only source they have, or they have other sources of funding as well?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to have to defer the question to the CAS director. I don't have, I have their proposal in front of me. I know the entire budget is much higher, but I would have to defer back to the CAS.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I'm Laura Atoyan. I'm an 18-year board member at CASP, and I do write the grant, so I can answer all your questions. The 45,000 we requested was for three schools, not two schools. So, it's a minimum of 15,000 per school, and with that, we leverage quite a bit also. As far as the number of kids we serve, it has to do with the referrals we get from the administration and the teachers. And we cannot have more than 25 kids at a time, because this is a group counseling, group, actually, group clinical therapy. We do not call it clinical therapy, because parents are uncomfortable with it. So, we call it group counseling. And you can only have so many kids in one hour. This is done during class hours, during school hours, and this is a pull-out program. Therefore, there is no issue of transportation, or language, or any other life issues for parents. By the way, this is our executive director, Arsina Vanisian. So, any other questions that you have, I'm happy to answer. I am losing a little bit of the train of your thought, Ms. Devine. So, would you please tell me again what your main concern is?
Well, and by the way, it is not a drug program. Right. I understand that now. Thank you. I understand that now.
This is basically a behavior modification program.
Yes.
And all the kids who really have serious mental issues are referred to private practitioners outside of the group. This is only for kids who cannot contain themselves, who will kick and scream and bite and scratch to get their way. These are kids who will not do homework. These are kids who will not listen to the teacher, who will keep talking and will be disruptive. So, we bring them into a situation where they can actually learn to have social skills in a group. They have to ask nicely, get what they want, say thank you, say please, share, express, and show academic improvement, which we follow up. How we know that we're effective? We have been doing this since the year 2000. We have done everything to follow up and track as many kids as we can, because once they leave the program or elementary school, it's really difficult to stay on top of who has gone where. Some move, some grow up, some leave Glendale, et cetera, et cetera. So, we decided that we were going to look at the rosters of Daly High School and see if some of the kids who were with us appear on that roster. And I'm proud to say that they do not. So, we know that what we do is effective. They end up pulling themselves together and do well academically. Maybe they do not become academic stars, but they hold their own and they graduate. So...
I just want to add that this is a very small investment, considering how much it costs a year to provide counseling to each student versus what would happen in the future if they do become menaces in the community. Let's just put it that way. And how much that costs the community once they're not helped at an elementary age. So the premise is to help them at this age so they don't create problems in the future, so they correct their behavior now. And of course, we do all kinds of follow-up with teachers, parents, counselors, et cetera.
Just a quick, I'm sorry, go ahead.
May I be very specific?
Okay.
The cost to each child is $10.75 per hour for clinical group therapy. And this is not the kind of service you would find at that rate anywhere in the world. And it is effective.
I don't know about in the world, but...
Not around here. And one other thing is that there is no other program like this one in the community, only because it's group counseling. So you, it's more cost-effective to reach more students. And...
Question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is this special education class or no?
No, it is not a special education class.
No, we do not accept children who have, who are supposed to be in special education.
Ones with very minor special education issues may be in the, but it is not a special education program.
It's not. It's not drugs, it's not special education. It's behavior modification.
A quick question. So just to sum it up, your budget per school is $15,000, and that serves 25 kids. That's $600 a kid.
The 25, the number 25 is per our contract with the city. That is the...
No, I understand.
Yeah, I'm just saying that that's...
You know what? Because I was watching the CDVG session, and I saw you mentioned that it's $10 an hour, $10.67. But if it's 25 kids, $15,000 a year, $600 a year per kid, which is almost nothing. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. What I'm going to do is, before we continue the discussions, call for a short recess of the council and the housing authority so I can review some information that just came to my attention. And then we will come back on. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Folks, it's 4:20. We will resume deliberations at 4:30. So if you could have a seat.
Thank you.
And we'll be back with you shortly.
Thank you. We are back from recess and, you know, one of the problems is that there's always a limited pool of funds and unfortunately every year the pool of funds drains. It's like having a leak in your pool and the funds go down and down and down. And it's just nerve wracking for the members of the commission to try and allocate the funds. And there's always a point where the private organizations look to the city earmarked programs and say, well, why are these funds being paid out of the CDBG where they could do good elsewhere? It's always a problem. We wish we could solve it. Mr. Sananian, do you have a suggestion?
I do. Let me allow me to preface whatever I'm going to say with the fact that I've had the honor of serving on CDBG for about four years, just short of four years, and I've chaired the commission for two of those years. And I know how much work goes into determining how to allocate the money. It's not a simple task. It's very work intensive. There's a lot of paperwork involved. Nothing that Mr. Armenian said is an exaggeration by any means. So it's hard for us to sit here and try to unwind and redo a pretty lengthy and strenuous process that the committee, the commission has gone through. So my inclination is to agree with the commission's recommendations because most of the time they're right. They're right and they're based on the facts. They're based on just the circumstances at the time. And this time, like previous two, three years, the circumstances are pretty stark. They're bad. Money's being cut and our nonprofit groups that are playing such an important role in the city of Glendale are feeling the impact. So here's what I'm thinking. As a commissioner, I remember how much we resented the fact that the city appeared to double dip or triple dip. And this is not to reflect badly on the city. This is just the way things work. And once you're on council, you realize that. But as a commissioner, when you're looking at the absolute numbers and you're saying, okay, so this money goes here for the city, this money goes here for the city, then there's a limited pot. Of that limited pot, there's the pre-allocated amounts which go to the city. And then there are even a couple of groups that are still city-related and that are being funded, which seems unfair. It seems like the total amount diminishes to such a small totality that the commission is put in the inenviable position of cutting funds to everyone. So here's what I'm suggesting.
What we've been discussing for the last 15 minutes, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
But the fact that I've served on that commission and I'm on council.
Absolutely.
I see it and I remember how I used to see it and how I see it now. And here's what I'm suggesting. And this never sounds, this doesn't sound pretty, but I'll explain why I hope it works. I'm suggesting that senior service program and student training as role models, commonly known as STARs program, be, all the funding be eliminated. There will be a caveat, but that funding be eliminated and be given out to those groups that were cut and even maybe the ones who weren't cut, those that needed the most.
So that's $28,000?
That's a total of $28,000. And my hope is that somehow, since these are city-related things, that we will make right from other funds through the city. So no one's hurt at the end of the day or everyone's hurt just a little bit maybe. And I don't know.
I appreciate what you're saying, sir. I would only call out that the only thing that makes this possible in this current year for this appropriation would be that we are projecting an ever so small surplus at the end of the current fiscal year. So the idea of one-time money for ongoing projects is a dicey proposition. So as long as everyone understands this is effectively one time until it isn't.
So that's the overarching huge caveat that everyone needs to understand. If we go through with this, this is going to happen once and once only. Don't expect this to ever happen again. The only reason this would be happening is because we're looking at a very modest surplus this year and we want to use that money in a meaningful way. And what better way than to help fund our CDBG organizations?
Yeah, let me just say that the CDBG commission was not given this option. And that's why they didn't, they weren't able to come up with this option. They were told these are programs like STAR that we want you to fund. So they didn't have that option. We spent the last 15 minutes kind of, I mean, obviously not violating the Brown Act and talking amongst ourselves, but having individual conversations with the city manager who has sort of given us a little flexibility to, because of the year-end surplus, he's been seeing the budget. We haven't seen it yet, to say there might be some money there that we can use for our own internal programs. And I think every single person on this council and the authority, I'll speak for you guys, that you all want, I know we all want to give as much money to our nonprofits as we possibly can through this process. So I think this time, given the financial situation that we're in, we hopefully have come up with a way of maintaining the STAR program and our own programs, but also giving, passing some money back, additional money back to the different nonprofits.
So STAR and senior services would not be funded through CDBG. They would be funded from?
General fund.
General fund or whatever surplus.
This?
This year.
This year only.
Next year, STAR and senior services will be back and will be part of CDBG?
Yes, sir. And with the mayor's indulgence, I would just say for the record that what we are outlining for you, what I spent the last bit of time just explaining one by one by one by one, is that as Councilmember Friedman indicates, as we look at the budget, getting ready for the budget study session, the ability to absorb $28,000 is all that we are advancing for the council. What you do with that $28,000 is a function of what your policymaking authority lends itself to.
So given that, so I would agree with that. And let's assume that that is accepted by the council, that $28,000 be relieved from the CDBG burden and placed on the city general fund in light of this one-time-only, unexpected surplus. Ms. Devine, would you have a proposal for enhancing one of the fundings?
Well, I've been kind of championing ARS. I think that they should, I think they deserve to have more funding, possibly $8,000 more. I think that would help. And I also would like to recommend that GYA receive possibly $10,000 more.
Okay. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay. So this is just in terms of getting it. Mr. Carpetian?
So if you have a plan, can you run your plan throughout so we'll see where the rest of the funds go? I mean, GYA and ARS. So what is the?
So can we then put a shout out to what we'd like to see funded?
Yes, I'm going to give everyone a turn.
Okay, I see how we're doing.
I'm going to give everyone a turn to pull that forward. And if there's any objections, we can object. So Mr. Carpetian has the floor.
So the Catholic charities will get $3,800?
I don't have an objection to that. That doesn't restore anyone fully, but that's...
An additional $3,000.
That's additional because they were cut $5,500. So this restores $3,800 of the proposed cut.
Yes, no objections here.
No objection, Ms. Friedman?
Well, I would propose that we increase Essentia's funding $4,500 and Door of Hope[1218.92][1218.92]$2,000.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any objection from Essentia?
Does that fully, so we have ARS, $8,000, Catholic Charities, $3,800, GYA, $10,000, Essentia, $4,500, and Door of Hope, $2,000. I think that brings us to our limit.
Catholic Charities is $3,500.
$3,500. I'm sorry. I misread my...
Mr. Carpetian?
Here, Mike.
Mr. Carpetian, are you okay with that?
Versus 38.
Yeah, 38 won't fit. 35 will fit in the budget.
Okay.
Okay. So do you under, if we made a motion to fund in the direction given?
Correct. You'd have, Mr. Mayor, you'd have to make, somebody would have to make a motion to remove the $20,000 for the city programs and include the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 programs, nonprofit programs that you just delineated.
I'll make that motion.
Let me see here. Let's...
So that would be under?
It would be under 1C.
C. Okay. So let's just go through 1A, which is certifying the environmental negative deck. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
And 1B would just be the five-year plan.
And 1B is the five-year plan. Is there a motion for 1B?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. 1C?
Before we move on, 1C, we haven't discussed the capital improvements aspect of it at all, right?
Right.
We have not, but included in 1C is the staff's recommendation of the capital improvements.
So should we not take a look at it?
Sure. We are certainly entitled to look at that. If there's any questions or comments on that. Ms. Devine?
On the capital, the, let's see, it's the capital improvements on the Livwell Senior Center at Glendale Adventist Medical Center for $54,000, Mr. Armenian, for compliant automatic doors for the senior center. I have a question. Is that used by the seniors? Isn't that, I thought that the seniors are usually out in the, in the community having their luncheons. And I don't understand where this is serving the seniors.
Is there someone who can address that issue? Ms. Miller from Glendale Adventist?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Regarding the senior center, this is an ongoing project. We have a building on campus that is a community building that has been renamed to a senior center. Each year, we identify a different part of this building with the hopes in the next three years that we will be able, with the collection of the money from the city, as well as the money from other foundations that we have worked with, that we will be able to open our senior center and be able to provide screenings, be able to provide classes, be able to provide a teaching kitchen, be able to have a garden, all of the sorts of things that would continue the continuity of care for the seniors that we serve in our hospital as they go out into their homes. So these particular doors, which get us to the ADA compliant, are just one more step in that process that will allow us in the immediate future with these doors, with these bathrooms, with the previous projects that have been done, we will be able to start providing some of the services that you're familiar with, Councilmember Devine, in that particular building. So this is a way to continue to move us forward on this project, which is an ongoing three-year project. And we are up to serving 3,000 seniors in our community at this point that are members of the Livwell program.
Okay. Thank you.
Will you be having classes there or what will be going on at this center? And where are you as far as the renovations? Are you actually starting those already to provide this facility?
The renovations, would you like to speak to the moises? Thanks.
Councilmember Devine, members of the housing authority and council, there is a actual current project for the Glendale Adventist Center, which called a new name, Senior Wellness, Livwell Senior Center at Glendale Adventist. And they are doing some modifications, which is CDBG funded, for restroom modifications at the center. So they're doing the modifications and we have, I believe, $125,000 in CDBG funding in that project and rest is matched by the hospital. But it is a, it is a new senior center and they are collaborating with the city, with our senior services staff to provide expanded senior services in that area and also the general Glendale area. I believe those improvements will be done in at least six months from now.
So this facility is providing services to seniors for no compensation or what's?
Yes, the services are free. They are part of the Livwell senior program. It's actually a multi-purpose center. The top part of that building is the senior center, which was to be the old community center. The bottom part is the drister and the, yes, the drister part of the building. It's set aside from the main hospital campus and the drister provides food and clothing for low-income families, seniors, our homeless referrals get sent over there for clothing. So it is actually a multi-purpose center, but the top part where CDBG funds are being invested in is a senior center.
So any other questions on the capital projects?
Yes. Southern Glendale Code Enforcement, $370,000. I would like to know what...
Yes, the $370,000 is what pays for code enforcement personnel that operate within the CDBG census tract area. So to the extent that there is presumed to be a heightened need for code enforcement in the census tract area, these employees are relegated to, their operations are relegated to those neighborhoods, as opposed to being able to go throughout the entire community the way that other code enforcement officers and personnel are allowed to, based on the funding. So the idea here is that if you did not have CDBG funding for code enforcement, that $370,000 would have to come from other, some other city source or not offer code enforcement to that degree. And to the extent that there is, I want to say about five code enforcement officers that handle the entire city, it would make a very serious dent in that service level.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on some of the remaining disbursements? Okay. If not, then we have item 1C, 2015, 2016 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan with the, with the amendments to remove from the staff funding plan $15,000 from the senior services program and $13,000 from the STAR program. And in its place with the amendments and modifications listed by each of the council for those five additional programs. Should we repeat them?
Want to state them on the record again?
Okay. So supplementing the recommended amount for the ARS by 8,000, supplementing Catholic charities for 3,500, supplementing the GYA by 10,000, supplementing the Essentia, it's their community outreach program, by 4,500, and the Door of Hope by 2,000.
We just need to make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. We have no other items on this agenda. Will someone move to adjourn for council?
So moved.
Second.
Council's adjourned?
I move for...
Housing?
Housing.
Second.
Second. Housing is adjourned.
Okay. We have a close...